Will be provided by the church at Grace Point Pastor Rusty Aswell. Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Milan Blake, please stand.
Let's pray together. In Proverbs three, five and six, it says, trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him and he will make your path straight. And Jesus, we invite you here today. Thank you for the giftedness of these men and these women in such an incredible way, Father, to come together, corporately, but also as individuals to make an incredible impact for our community. Father, you are in our community and we acknowledge you there and you at work. But Father, there is tough things that happen in our community that sometimes we have to make incredible decisions on. And as we work towards those decisions today, Father, guide us. May we have an incredible corporate unity to see how we can make Bradley County and our surrounding communities the most incredible here in the state of Tennessee. Father, we thank you for this. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will, well, the mayor is not here with us today. Adam, do you have anything for the mayor? Okay. Reports from committees and or districts will start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report today.
Okay, Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oswald in the sixth district.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to report on Saturday's household hazard waste day spring event for 2025 is in the books. We had four hundred and fifteen total city and county residents showed up Saturday. The great thing I noticed was our survey sheets showed a lot of folks that have never been there before. So that's a good sign that we're getting the the word out there for our event. I just want to say a huge thank you for helping. Goes to Thomas Bell that works with me. Alan Mincy, director of KB, Chris Broome, city of Cleveland Stormwater and all of his guys that showed up. Sarah Jensen, Bradley County Stormwater, Lisa Mantooth with Vokker and all her great folks that showed up. We we all worked from about seven forty-five till about twelve forty-five. It was all the way around the the building and all the way up to APD forty. So we were we were busy all day long. I think everybody got their bill for it. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district, doing well.
Commissioner Thompson.
Chairman Ed.
Commissioner Gilbert.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came up to the bakery and helped pass out donuts to the teachers. All the teachers that came up, thank you for what you do. And we gave out over two hundred donuts and we had a really good time. And I think the guys that come up, the mayor come up and handed them out with us. Mr. Crye and Patrick Spangler, he was one of the went, one of the principals from the county that won. They said he just drove up, was sitting across the street waiting. And Jessica Bigum from the city, she got the donuts and take to her class. Principal from city schools. And my nephew Braxton Riad, he graduated with honors. Something I never got to do is wear white. He had all the honors. So I just like to congratulate him and that's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a great weekend in Bradley County, in Cleveland City with the graduations. And with it being Mother's Day. We men up here are the men we are because of our mothers in many cases, for my case for sure. And Mother's Day is a special day at our house and I'm sure at the house in our community. But thanks to our mothers in Bradley County and Cleveland for what they do for all of us. Also, the third district, particularly sixty highway and now looking as we're seeing the growth patterns that are happening is the travel along our highways with two lane highways and multiple dwellings that are coming up with many, many cars. So that's kind of the future of the challenge, I think, for all of us that sit here is how we have the growth that we have and we can still get the transportation moving by those neighborhoods that are having needs for another lane or two and just how we fund all that. So that's in my district, that's where much of the dialogue is as we see sixty highway and how it's developed, which is tremendous. But how do we get, how do we motor through those and get to two lane road with all the cars there? So it's it's called progress and we're proud of it. But at the same time, it's going to cause some heavy lifting in the future, I think. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo the congratulations from Commissioner Winters on our graduates from this weekend. Over a thousand graduates in our community and we're thankful for the flexibility of our families with weather that came in and also the partnership of First Baptist Church stepping up at the last hour to provide us a space for that. So congratulations to those graduates and their families and other than that, all is well in the third. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. First, I need to put on the next voting session to increase the allotment for the HCI water project. As you know, we're, we, every year we've been doing it and we took a pause there for a couple of years while we used and diverted over to federal art money, but that's used up now. We're back to the HCI. As you know, projects are a little bit more expensive, all that kind of stuff. So chatted with the mayor the other day about the idea of increasing a little bit more than we normally do on the index to forty thousand. But this allows him, if we go ahead as a commission, it allows him to put that in his proposal on that. So we can put that on the voting session next week, Mr. Chairman. I'd appreciate that.
Done.
Very good. Next, Lee University in the third district has announced that they have a new president. Mr. Cook, Dr. Cook. I think it's a great choice. The board of directors, they took their time. They did it right. And I think we're all going to benefit from that. The community will for sure. Teachers and employees, happen to know one of them. But most important, the students. They're expanding their curriculum, their opportunities for their students and the future students. So congratulations to Dr. Cook and look forward to working with him. Last on that same effort, Mr. Chairman, as you know, you just talked about the graduates. My next door neighbor, and I'm sure there's plenty, I know there are plenty of others, men, young men and women that were going to, that will be reporting to boot camp or basic training here this week or the beginning of next week or sometime in the summer. Their their reporting dates vary. But I wish them all well. As you know, that first day when they get off that, well, when I got off the bus, they started yelling at you before you even got off the bus and it can be stressful. But I encourage them just to remember it. Ain't nothing but think it will end and you'll be better for it. So I wish all the men and women who are joining the armed forces here in the next week or two, all the best. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Alfred, please.
Yes, just one quick announcement. The law enforcement committee meeting will meet Wednesday at the Justice Center at one P. M. At that time, we will review and see the updates on the recent kitchen fire and see what progress they're making on getting it repaired. Other than that, the second district doing well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, the fire committee will be meeting on May fifteenth at noon at Station Eleven on Menace Road. I look forward to the committee seeing the progress of the new fire facility. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Beatty, please.
I have nothing to report in the first district.
Thank you. We'll now move along to the agenda items. Agenda item A, Bradley County Schools Budget. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, according to the budget calendar, today is the day that the schools comes over and chats with the county commission. This is basically their version of the hearing. We received the budget last week. We had a chance to review it. So Ellen is here to say whatever she wants to say and address or answer any questions that we may have. So if you would recognize her, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Please.
And we are just going to go over the PowerPoint that we presented to the Board of Education back in April. And so this is mainly focused on Fund One Forty-One, the general purpose school budget. So I'm going to start off top with our sources of revenue, our biggest one being our state revenue. And so this is our fiscal year twenty-six, our Tennessee Investment and Student Achievement, OrtizA. And we do have a new base per student that did increase at the state level. And we had an additional two hundred and twenty-two dollars per student for a total of seven thousand two hundred ninety-five. This also includes a seventy-five percent hold harmless on our economically disadvantaged count. And so our March TISA projection has new revenue of just above two million dollars. So our state funding portion is that seventy-five million dollars that's highlighted at the bottom. This has just been a graph that the state has provided us over the years to kind of help highlight some of the TISA funding. So we've got the bottom, which is the base that every student generates, that seven thousand two hundred ninety-five that is subject to our state and local split. And then it goes up to our weights for various unique learning needs, economically disadvantaged, concentrated poverty. Those students each get an additional five to a hundred and fifty percent depending on which category they fall into. Then we also get direct funding for CTE, state testing, various things. That's all a hundred percent funded. And then above and beyond the TISA formula, we also get some outcomes based funding. And this year that was about eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. For our local revenue, we get property tax and sales tax are our two big ones. So this year, over our amended budget amounts, we are looking at a three percent increase over the projected current for property tax. So it's an about additional two hundred and thirty-seven thousand in revenue. And for sales tax, we are looking at a one point eight percent increase over our projected year collections. And we did talk to Mayor Davis about those numbers. Felt like they were pretty conservative. Three percent is about what we've been running on growth and property tax over the last several years. Sales tax, the last several years, we brought that projection pretty, pretty far down. And this is a little bit more than we did last year, but not a whole lot more. One of the other areas that we have to highlight is our average daily, or our weighted full time equivalent average daily attendance because we do have the city municipality within us. So this is just the method that used in Tennessee to determine the school district funding based on the student attendance, adjusted for factors like grade level and the time in school. This year, we did have a decrease in our ADA and that did result in a loss of about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for the current year. And then I had to pull that into my projections going forward. So that did, did have a pretty significant impact on our local funding. All number, but it's very significant. So it is all. So we watch that. So I know there's not a big difference what we care before and what. These are just some charts that are going to highlight some of just our revenue sources. And this is just showing that state is a pretty, is a significant part of our budget at just over sixty-eight percent and our locals at about thirty-one percent. Now that federal sliver that's just hardly there is just what comes into the general purpose budget. This does not include Fund One Forty-Three or Fund One Forty-Two that are considered actual federal funds. Totally separate pots of money for those. And for our local revenue, we like to highlight this because it, back, I think, when I started ten years ago, that this was definitely more of an even fifty-fifty split. But over the years, sales tax has overtaken property tax. So now we're sitting at about a fifty-eight, thirty-eight split on that. And then the other is marriage tax, our mixed drinks tax, some other little local small things that come in. As far as our expenditures, the biggest, the navy pot of that pie is our salaries and benefits and that represents eighty percent. So that doesn't leave us a whole lot of left to do with everything else. Those other slivers, starting at the burgundy and working its way up, is our contracted services. It's seven percent. Supplies and materials is about four. Utilities is about three percent. Other charges is about three and we spend about three percent on equipment and capital outlay. So that just kind of shows that, you know, we are investing in our teachers as much as we can. And when we try to pull that, there's not really a whole lot of money left to like make some swings in those things because it, salaries and benefits are already such a great percentage of our budget. So some of our budget highlights that we're very excited about this year is we are, have included a cost and a four percent raise for our all salaried position. That's about three point, three point seven million dollars. And we're very excited to get to do this for our all salaried staff across the board. Our, one of the hot topic items from the Freedom of Education Act has been the voucher bonus that is coming down. Our Board of Education did pass that resolution and we have submitted it. And we will be receiving the funding, about twenty-three hundred per teacher, but they will get a gross two thousand on their check. They're going, the state's going to fund seven hundred and seventy-six positions approximately. And so they will see that on their August check, but this is bonus directly from the state. But the board has prioritized that we value all positions in the district because we can't do it without everybody. So we are using that one time outcomes based funding that is outside of our TISA and we are going to give all positions a bonus. So anybody that is certified is going to get the same two thousand dollar bonus that the state is giving. And for full time and part time, we're halving it to a thousand. And we're also giving all classified, that'd be your teacher assistants, cafeteria workers, those, those, that group of people the full time of a fourteen hundred dollar bonus. All the bonuses will be paid out in August. We also have several new positions coming in. One of the dean of students, it will be placed at Oak Grove, but it will be a system wide position. This is for a beacon behavior classroom that will be there. We also have some new ESL teachers, special education teachers and assistants, our special transportation, or they're going to get an additional hour. And then we are projecting a seven percent health insurance increase going in that will be effective in January. We are also have capital outlay included in this budget. I will note that it is about two million. This looks much more like a pre-COVID number. We've had some really good COVID, COVID funding over the last several years and we have put a lot into capital outlay. So we're getting much more back to what is that normal number. But we are doing significant work in our buildings and grounds, our general maintenance. We have our Bank of America energy payment and safety upgrades. The capital out list, capital outlay list was approved by the Board of Education and we have a committee that makes that recommendation based on principal's mittles. And we also have some additional funding. We do have a new janitorial contract going into place on June first. The new award is to Prechard Industries. So that has increased our costs. We do hope that some significant changes in that contract are going to result in a higher level of cleaning across the district. We are also excited that we are finally doing a district wide copier contract. Previously, we have sent money to the schools to pay for copiers and then they have had to pay for whatever exceeds that allocation. So they are super excited that we are bearing that full cost for them. So they will also have money at the schools freed up to do what they need to do. And we are continuing with our technology refresh. This is a result of COVID when we went one to one across the entire district. This is just an update of where we are in our current budget on our undesignated fund balance. We are currently sitting at about six point eight one percent. And that is kind of the sweet spot that Ms. Willcutt kind of, Dr. Cash kind of established prior to me. And I agree that that's about that seven percent mark is where we want to be. And really, that's higher than the recommendations. But some of the recommendations from CTOS also say that we need to be able to cover our one to two months of operational expenses and just a month of payroll is seven point two million dollars on average. So we feel pretty good with that eight million dollar mark, which is about seven percent. And going into next year, after we have several uses of fund balance, we are going to be just over that seven percent mark at about eight point one million. So off the top, instead of doing budget amendments in that July, August timeframe, we went ahead and included some uses of fund balance to kind of help level it out to hopefully make that a little easier of a transition. So we do have those bonuses. That's eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. We did have to go into fund balance for our capital outlay. We are also excited to pull Parkview money over into Fund One Seventy-Seven and that finishes out what we expect to need for Parkview, but that has not been bid out, so that could change. We are also going to have to relocate playgrounds at Parkview and Hopewell this summer because of the construction. And we are going to start planning ahead for the furniture fixtures and equipment that are needed at our expansion sites. So that's Fund One Forty-One. So I'll stop there and let you question some Fund One Forty-One before I shift into the other two.
Commissioner Winters.
Tell me about the ADA. You said that the ADA had gone down. True, false? What is it?
ADA is not membership. It's average daily attendance. So when they, and they're pulling the average daily attendance monthly now and your membership. So from, from that, one month may be up, one month may be down, and it is about the attendance. So when they calculate that out, there's a split in any areas that have both a county and a city system. And so as you saw, ours was what, point oh oh five eight? So that very, very small amount turned into dollars. So it hasn't gone back and forth a lot. I think in my tenure, this is only the second, second time. And that's what it is, is average daily attendance. So and the things that go into that attendance.
What, what is a dean of students?
A dean of students is a, actually a ten month employee. They have to have an admin license and they are there to assist and guide mostly student oriented pieces, interactions with students, interactions with families, interactions with teachers, but they don't, they don't hold the, the full load of an assistant principal.
Dr. Cash, back to that attendance thing. So point zero zero five eight, is it a reduction?
Yes.
And what's it a reduction from?
The reduction is from actually the attendance that's calculated by the state, average daily attendance. And Mr. Collins, would you like to add to that?
I was just going to add that that is a new system. It used to be a prescribed monthly system, whereas there were dedicated months, I think, was it four or five?
Yeah, you had, you had the, the first three, three, it was some in the fall and then the heavy was in the spring and now it is monthly.
Thank you.
So the two hundred and fifty-one thousand or quarter of a million that you quote unquote lost, how, who did you lose it to?
The city.
The city. So they're going to gain two fifty-one that we lose because of the ratio of the total.
Yes. So attendance matters.
Yeah. And this, I agree with you.
And, and there's no calculation of, there's no calculation of the size of the systems or anything. It's just raw numbers.
So their, their ratio is, everything equals the one, you add the two together, it equals one. Their, their ratio percentage wise is more, what year is this? What are you saying?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, right?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's live. It's in real time.
It's real time. They're pulling monthly now. And so they'll calculate that at the end of the year.
So, all right. But in theory, unless that is if you don't have as many students, then I guess they're thinking you don't need it.
Well, it depends. So one of the things that we're really trying to work with the department now is on students that have chronic absenteeism related to health. And then I have a large special needs population that for health reasons might need to be out. All those things count against us. We, we don't take into consideration extended illnesses or anything that we are working with the department to, to try to shift that.
So not to belabor the point, but my concern is this hopefully isn't a trend. But as you know, we have a number of city students or kids who live in the city who go to county, go to your schools. And there's some in the county who go to the city. And to me, this kind of mucks the waters a little bit. I mean, on how you, they go back and forth and all that. How do you keep track? I guess you guys have to.
It's, it's, it's based on the students that are enrolled in your district. It doesn't separate any, anything like that. And again, it also doesn't separate illnesses that are for health reasons or like I, I have some students that have high respiratory issues and they may be out for extended times for health reasons, even if they're excused, it does not matter.
Thank you. Please.
You say DA, is it the first month or every month now?
It's, it's every month now.
Do they start at the first month?
They do. They calculate, you're good, are we still in about forty-five days? That they. It's, yeah, it's the first three twenty day periods, but they go back to each month to see where, where the pull is. But then they pull.
It starts at the first month of school.
Yes. So you get through those first twenty days, then forty days, then sixty, and then they're pulling it like the fifteenth day of every month. Fifteen to nineteen days.
Is this drop in students been over the year or two or is it just starting this year, you think?
It, it's not a drop in students. It's a drop in attendance of those students. So when, when you look, and again, we're working with the state because we do have large populations with chronic illnesses and those count against us.
When you say chronic illness, you've got a kind of a rough number?
No, sir. We, we, our goal is to be under that ten percent mark. And I think, Mr. Collins, district wide, I think we're a little above that. But, but in that you are, like, let's say that a, a kid breaks their ankle and they're out for ten days. We, that counts against us no matter what, even if we're providing services and everything, those things count against us. So what, we're looking at the State Department and saying, you know, we're still educating those children. We're sending work home. Teachers are checking in. So they were, they're trying to work on a system that would relieve us of those kinds of absences. Now you still have the kids that we chase down through the court system that are out fifteen, twenty for no apparent reason. But the city also has that too.
A little more about this dean of students at Oak Grove. Could, could you give us a little more on that?
We have two special classes at Oak Grove that take on a lot of extra supervision, extra needs. And our, our input in that was to assist that principal and that school with that extra load.
Is that person going to be handicapped certified and all that?
They, they have to have an admin license and they have to go through all the necessary training for that. There actually will be a special ed liaison, so they have to have all the training.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Real quick follow up. So that point zero zero five eight in that ramification of that two hundred and fifty-one, that's a number you have to use in the upcoming budget.
Yes, sir. They will pull it again. We'll get that again in spring of twenty-five as well. They'll pull, they'll give us that ratio for the next year's budget.
Spring of twenty-six.
Twenty-six. We're already in twenty-five.
And then once you get a new number, then that, from that point, once you get the number, that's the new number that you have to use with.
For a year, yes. For one budget year.
Right, right. So if we ever went to the bond market and that's the number we have to use.
Yes.
Up until spring of next year.
Yes.
All right.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And there's two, actually I think three more budgets that you have, only two that I've got highlighted in my PowerPoint. You have also Fund One Forty-Five. That is our special revenue fund that specifically operates the Pi Center. This is, we are concluding our second full year. We had our first full year last year. We were very excited to get through that first audit because this is new for us. It's new for the comptroller. And we had a clean audit, so we were thrilled. And we'll get better and bad, better data as we go because budgets are built off historical data. And only having a year and a half to work with does make that a challenge and, but that will get better. So you also have the Fund One Forty-Five and that is all our program. That includes our leases, our common area maintenance revenue, in addition to any program, program revenue that is coming in for programs like welding, mechatronics, medium heavy truck, any of those programs have the funds coming into there as well. And then the third budget you have is Fund One Seventy-Seven. That's our multi-year building projects. And we have done many, many projects with those. And if you go to the next slide, Ms. Laurie, and these are the projects that we have set to either conclude or really jump off in the upcoming fiscal year. So we've got Hopewell, the Pi Center, we've got a couple of little things and we're working with Junior Achievement on Biz Town. We are going to be finishing up the special education suite at Ocoy Middle School. We'll be kicking off Parkview. We are hopeful to start the science wing at Bradley. And then we've got that furniture and fixtures coming in. So the money that you see going out of Fund One Forty-One will be coming into Fund One Seventy-Seven. So this is kind of where we are going, starting July one. And then I believe you also have Fund One Forty-Three. I don't have a slide for that. But that is the central cafeteria budget and they are getting the same raise as we. And they are getting the same raise as we are getting that 4% in the district. So that's the rest of my budgets. I just want to thank you. Mayor Dave's not here, but he worked with Dr. Cash and I on our local revenue numbers. And just thank the Board of Education for all y'all working with this, the mayor's office, trustee and assessor's office are great. And also my staff has been wonderful this year, as always. Ms. Wilcutt always said the same thing, and they, they truly, really are. And so they've been a great help to me. But if you've got any specific questions or other questions, I will be happy, or Dr. Cash and I will be happy to answer them.
I actually just wanted to know, you have before you a balanced budget coming before you, and we're always very appreciative of the commission working with us and the Board of Education to continuously bring a balanced budget. Thank you.
Anyone have any question? Commissioner Rogers?
A follow-up question on the ADA, on the daily attendance. That is because we have two school systems in our, right? That we have to split that between the county and the city on the state level.
Systems that do not have a split system do not, do not have that issue at all.
And I know you talked a lot about the reasonings why and working with the state, but what are some of the, I know that, I know that this has been a big issue over the years. And sometimes it's an issue for the city and sometimes it's an issue for the county. But I also know that you guys, and having conversations with you guys in the school board and principals, that you guys are doing a lot of really great things to push attendance and to really make attendance, you know, showing up to school and having, you know, kids in seats is a really big thing. Would you guys mention some of those great things that you guys are doing locally?
I will actually start with one school in particular, and they're all pretty similar. Hopewell Elementary has had attendance challenges and incentives throughout this second semester. And from two months in a row, I think Hopewell has had 100% attendance with those initiatives that they've had. Every school has systems in place to reward students for being present. We also have strong follow-up when students are absent with not just phone calls home, but letters home, trying to build those relationships. It's a whole system in place and then rewarding those, those kids who actually have high attendance. It's a very small percentage that are in trouble when it comes to attendance. But that small percentage hits, hits your daily activities and your daily budget. So that's where we are with the state. We'll continue to celebrate attendance, to, you know, give attendance awards and improve that. But it's that very small targeted group that we have to find a way to work with the state to recognize that especially high instances of illness should really not count in that, that. But, but I'm very proud. I mean, as a district, we are right at 95% attendance or above with our attendance rate. It's those chronic absenteeisms that really hit us.
And I do believe that you had one, if not two, people graduate, students graduate this past weekend that had 100% attendance.
Through 12th grade, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So I know you guys, it's something that you guys really push and work on. So thank you, Dr. Cash. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Dr. Cash, our first, on the Pi Center, on that, where are we at, or where you guys at? On, when we first started this, you had an agreement with those who are going to have a build-out so they could allocate their funding for their build-out as part of their commitment to you. We're now, what, four or five years into this? But they all, they all had different scopes or different timetables.
Depending on when they came in, it's somewhere between that five and 10-year, but every year their contributions go up. So I would think Center for Sports Medicine has been the one that's been, was in there first. And then you've got a couple others. But their, their cost to give back and pay in increases every year, that abatement.
Sorry. Do you have any that are, they're totally paying?
Not yet.
I don't. The Science Wing, that's obviously very interesting to us. Three million is what you're, the estimate when we started that project was in the tens, so.
Right. The, the last conversation that we had with, with the state-level government about that was that we should know any day. And that's been over a week and a half ago. So we, we've been in that final look for three months now. So, so two weeks ago, they said, your answer is coming, you're, you're gonna be funded, but we still don't have the letter in hand. It will, and of course, there's always that chance that the price has gone up. But at least we've got the split with the, with the federal government, which will make it much easier for us.
Yeah. And on starting, talking about split, you don't have to split that money.
I do not have to split that money. I do not have to split the money for Hopewell, Parkview, Ocoe or any of the others either because we had the funds to do that.
That's, that is our required.
So that's the only amount that you're gonna have to pay for the entire project? You don't have to budget anymore after that?
Well, it would really depend on what the, if the cost has gone up, but it wouldn't be substantially higher than that.
So Dr. Cash, I'm gonna ask the question that I always like to ask you, and that is attracting and retaining your teachers. I mean, I had a chance to chat with some of your principals the other day. It's still a challenge, but we're getting better.
We, we, we're, we're getting better. I would say that our, our salaries are $7,000 more than the required state in, state required in '27. We continue to work on that. So the starting salaries, we're gonna still need to push higher. And every year, that's, that's where we kind of start, is how, how much, how much of an increase can we have? But we are in line with several districts. Our size are better. We're actually better. And then being competitive, we are, and, and I hurt for some of our surrounding districts poking some of the others because they don't have that tax base to pull in, but we are significantly higher than those.
So it allows you to go out there and recruit and.
Recruit and compete, yes.
Last question, this may be for Ellen, is what is the total, I should, I can, but what is the total for all your funds together that the school budget is, 141 to 177?
I have not looked at the total specifically, but we are at one point, we're at 108, 115 million on Fund 141, which is the largest budget we have started with. I think we're sitting at about 13 million, yeah, in 177. It's about half a million for 145. And then we don't have Fund 142 completed yet for next year. And then Fund 143, I believe, was sitting at about eight million. So we're.
That puts you about 100 and.
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty-four, hundred and thirty-five. A hundred and thirty-four million dollar school budget now for Bradley County Schools, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You, you filled some pretty, pretty great shoes when you followed Susan Wilcutt. And, and thank you for this presentation. This was excellent. I think all of us that know you knew that you were able to do this. And thank you for, for what you've done there. One final thing. I think if we're, if you're having to go to the state on this deal with students that are ill and you're still sending support to them. And you have a teacher that's putting together a lesson plan, you have a, you have an administrative team that's looking out for that, working with that doctor on that student coming back. I think you should have whatever money is necessary to keep that going. So when they start counting that situation against the district, I think that we as a commission would love to come alongside of that. I don't speak for everybody, but for me, come alongside of that if you're in negotiation.
Work and listen to us. I've asked to even explore a different code because everything goes into the computer as a code for absences. So they are doing, some of it has to do with what the federal government will allow us to change in the, in the ESSER plan. So, but as far as the state of Tennessee, I think that they are listening and trying to, to figure out what we can do. I have all kinds of solutions for them. They're just not willing to, to tackle that yet. So thank you. I thank you for your support.
Commissioner Holf.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Laurie, would you go back to that project? Yes, sir. Is that all the projects you've got going for this coming year? That's coming out of that account?
Yeah, some of, that's in 177. That, that, those funds are specific to that account and approved by the board. So tho, those are the funds that we have allocated currently, yes.
Did you take the 300,000 that you refurbished in Walker Valley's track out of last year's budget or coming up?
That was in last year's. That was in last year's budget.
In the bleachers? Oh, out of last year's budget. The, let's see, I had one other question. I lost my train of thought. But, oh, with this, all these projects and everything, what are you projecting your fund balance will be at the end of this coming year?
What we have right now in our fund balance is a seven point.
I'm talking about next year's.
That, that would be next year's. That, that would be the fund balance for next year.
Oh, okay. Well, that varies. Could that go up a little, you think?
Well, well, we, we would hope that sales tax would go up and property tax would come in. Don't shake your head now. Don't, don't do that. Don't do that.
Sales tax?
So, you know, it all really depends on the funding that comes in, but right now, those are what our numbers are showing.
What are you gonna end this year with on your fund balance?
It's at six point.
Okay. Back to the Science Wing. That's been what, three, four years now? We've been waiting on this. Is, is there longevity?
Well, they, they did tell us it could be anywhere from one to two, two and a half years. So when you're working with that, that federal timeline, I guess they're true to their word. So, but it has gone through all the phases and processes and literally we were notified about two weeks ago that we should have our final, final, final form within days. And so we'll follow up again this week and see where we're at.
Seems like that's the same thing I heard the last year at this same time.
We have written and notified our congressman. We have, I mean, we've gone the gamut, but it may be time to reach out to them again. I think it literally lacks a signature.
Who's signature you think?
That we don't know. They tell me field agents have to come in and review and if there's a national disaster, the field agents go out. I don't know. I think it's a lot of, a lot of people trying to do multiple jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is more for us on the 14th. You see the 4.8 up there for Hopewell? Obviously, that's the amount that we're gonna have to budget and on our side, the 189, right? So that'll put, 800,000's already been spent from what I understand. We had an amendment, you'll have an amendment coming here. And then there was some more I saw in there as well. So the 800,000, it's already been spent in the current budget. The 4.8 and some change is what we'll budget in 189 in the, in the coming up budget. Or in that, that goes to the total of 15.1 over the three years, right? But just so everybody knows, that 4.8 is what we're gonna have to budget in 189, on our side.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll now go to Agenda Item B, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from C1 Rural Commercial District, FAR Forestry Agricultural Residential District, and I-1 General Industrial District to I-1 General Industrial Property located at 1098 and 882 Urbane Road and identified by Tax Map 035 Parcel 046 dot 15 and 064 dot 00. I ask that this be placed on next week's voting session, and this was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Bentley is not here today. He's gone to a, a meeting, but he did state that if you had any questions, you can reach out to him this week or he will be here on Monday at the voting session to be able to speak about these three resolutions.
Thank you. No questions. Agenda Item C, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from FAR Forestry Agricultural Residential District to I-1 General Industrial District property located at 3485 Water Level Highway and identified by Tax Map 058E Group A Parcel 019 dot 00. I ask that these be placed on the voting session next week, is also, Mr. Chairman.
Be no questions. Agenda Item D, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from R1 Rural Residential District to C2 General Commercial District property located at 6933 North Lee Highway and identified by Tax Map 01, 0210 Group A Parcel 013 dot 00. I ask that you, that we place this on next week's voting session as well. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, let me say that B, C, and D were all approved unanimously by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Be no questions. They'll be on the agenda. We'll now move down to communications from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please give your name and.
Dan Jones, District 7, 905 Forest Street Place. I know y'all are just tickled to see me every week. But we got a lot of work to do for the next four years, so I'll be here. My goodness. These ladies are awesome. The thing that concerns me about, and I'm curious about, because I know that as far as the ADA goes, I'm curious if, if there were a lot of absences in the Cleveland city system. I don't know if that impacted us or not. Because there were a lot of immigrant kids that didn't, literally did not show up for school. I'm not sure how that would impact us. I'm concerned about vouchers. You know, I know all you guys support public education and goodness gracious, keep it up. Because if those kids decide to go somewhere, that's gonna impact that. And I really do hope you get the communication from the federal government because right now, as you know, the Department of Education at the federal level is in complete disarray. And hopefully can get that straightened out so we can keep getting that help that we need from them. You know, the 7th District, people are still concerned about their social security and their Medicare and Medicaid. And there's a lot of people out there, folks that just need help. They need our help. I don't know that if we have anything like that in our budget to help homeless folks. I'm gonna go to the city council here in a few minutes and ask them the same question. If we don't, we need, probably need to think about that. We had an awesome service at our church on Sunday. At Mother's Day, belated ladies. My goodness, my mom passed away when I was 14. So Bradley County raised me. But we sang this. We did, we did one song as Jesus is the Answer. But we sang this song, and I have never heard this before, but if it's so appropriate for our town, I just want to share with you. God of grace, God of glory. On thy people pour thy power. Around the ancient church's story. Bring its blood to glorious flower. Grant us wisdom. Grant us courage for the facing of this hour. Lo, the hosts of evil around us scorn thy Christ assail his ways. From the fears that long have bound us, free our hearts to love and praise. Grant us wisdom. Grant us courage for the living of these days. Hear thy children's warring madness. Fend our pride to thy control. Shame our wanton self, selfish gladness. Rich in things and poor in soul. Grant us wisdom. Grant us courage. Least we miss thy kingdom's gold. Set our feet on lofty places. Sure our lives that they may be armored with all Christ-like graces. Pledge to set all captives free. Grant us wisdom. Grant us courage. That we fail not them nor thee. Save us from weak resignation to the evils we deplore. Let the search for thy salvation be our glory evermore. Grant us wisdom. Grant us courage, serving thee whom we adore. God bless you guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the audience? Thank you. The announcements, next meeting, voting session, Monday, May the 19th at 12:00. Upcoming events, Law Enforcement Committee, May the 14th at 1:00 p.m. at the sheriff's office. The Fire Committee will meet May the. The, uh, fire committee will meet May the fifteenth at noon at the Menace Road Station. And rookie school graduation, May the eighteenth at one PM, Family Worship Center.